I'd like to invite everybody to our Board of Trustees meetings on Tuesday, April 7th. We will stand, take the, say the pledge of allegiance, get the meeting started. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to take a moment of silence to honor our military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Tracy, can we have a roll call, please?
trustee McLaughlin.
President.
trustee McGuire.
President.
trustee Mann.
Okay, we have a review of approved fire minute, meeting minutes. Stack of papers to be vetted.
Mr. President, move to table the approval of these minutes so we've got a chance to read through these before we sign off.
I wouldn't assign them, but I, yes, I agree with that 100%. I'm not, can't, can't prove that without reading, listening to the recordings, I haven't. Can't, but I'm not ready to spend some time doing that.
One of order, we need a second.
Okay, so we have a second, we're not going to review the minutes. All business?
No vote?
We're not vote on that? Okay, so is that voting? Tracy, can we, we're not going to do the-
It's table, right?
It's taking, yeah.
Do you vote on table? Okay. trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
trustee McGuire?
Yes.
trustee Mann?
Yes.
Okay, so now let's go to old business. We have on the paper, uh, the COVID-19 update. Gene, is that yours?
Yeah, I just give that to you just a few minutes ago.
At work.
And I give you guys a safety update every day.
Yep. New business, future meetings, discussion. We actually going to do something different? What, what's on the agenda? Since I'm left out of the loop, what are you guys thinking about? Okay. Who put this on the agenda?
I did. Uh, we get a lot of calls from residents, emails asking, are you having a meeting, are you not? Other communities, some have tabled their meetings for once a month until this COVID is over. Some are not meeting at all. Some are all videotaped, as I witnessed today with the Kid Harrison Township, which anybody can go out on their YouTube channel and watch it. We just, we need to make sure we understand the staff because we get the phone calls. What do you want us to tell the public? Are you staying with the schedule? Or are you going to go to an alter schedule? Or are you going to do video?
We talked about video at the last meeting here, wasn't a lot of, didn't seem to be a lot of interest in trying to take our meetings electronic.
We can tape them, we still have it, have it open to the public. You can't have a meeting without having it open to the public, so.
If you do like the Zoom like we're doing, she's, it's, you can stream it out. And then you can put it on the YouTube channel like Harrison Township did, and then public can go see it then. You have to make a little bit of concession on this with, with, you know, doing these meetings that maybe they can't have them live, but they can at least watch it afterwards.
But we're still being advised, got to have quorum present, and it has to be accessible to the public. Those are the two critical.
Yeah, you three can be here. So, uh, Tracy and Mr. Wolfen, you can still hold it that way and not public in. I think that you'd have to ask your legal counsel on that part there, but I think that is now how Harrison Township did theirs.
Yes. I think the legal counsel already sent an email out on that before, before he wrapped up.
As long as you're streaming a live video, that is legal.
I thought we could not close the doors. Other than you had to let somebody in, if, if you have a meeting, they have to be able to attend if they want to attend. That's the last thing, I don't know, I read from the ten.
According to the OTA commentary on this, public access, public bodies must provide public access to any meeting or hearing that the public would otherwise be entitled to attend. The public body must ensure that public can observe and hear the discussion of all members, whether they participating in person or electronically.
So with that being said, Steve, I think we just go on as we're doing now for now until we decide to change anything, but.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
So what, we're going to make a decision at the last minute on whether or not to table the second meeting of the month. Is that where we're at?
You want to table the second meeting of the month, was you saying? Haven't, haven't heard that opinion yet.
Well, it's test voted. I'll make a motion to table the work session and the second meeting of the month for April.
So we have a motion on the floor to, uh, table the next meeting, the meeting, the second meeting of April. Uh, the meeting and the work session therefore, I've got the date in front of me. Um, any questions?
No questions. Are you, are you suggesting table both work sessions or just the whole?
Cancel both.
Both work sessions and one meeting, I don't know. Okay. I just found a question. So we're just having one meeting per month? And that's a regular?
Oh, do no, 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 we didn't say that. All we said is the second, the, what's, the rest of this month is all we're tabling for now. Next meeting we'll have is the first meeting next month, and then we'll decide then whether or not we'll have the second.
I saw you saying in May, well.
We don't know yet. We'll have to make that decision first meeting in May.
People try to first is the next, when you're going to cancel.
Okay.
That's going to be right when they're predicting the peak, and I believe it follows suit with what the other townships are doing for that meeting.
That was some of the argument today with Harrison Township, if anybody watches, they got in a pretty good dispute about whether their employees should be working, not working on call. And then they went to executive session, and then you didn't know what the result was. Um, that's the second question I have for you trustees, what do you want me to do with our staff through the next several weeks? You know, um, because they're asking as well. They have families of old, you know, what do you want us to do? Stay on duty like we've been? Or, you know, I have to, you have to make those decisions, I cannot. But before you get to that, make sure you, you take, you take a vote for this canceling the meeting, the second meeting of the month, make sure you're going on.
Yeah, we, we've, uh, had a motion in the second, we answered questions. Uh, Tracy, can we have a roll call on the, the second meeting?
One other, one, I have a quick question. Do we have anything big in the pipeline that we need this meeting for?
Love down, Aluera.
Go ahead.
Roll call, please, Tracy.
Okay. Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
trustee McGuire?
Yes.
trustee Mann?
Yes.
So we will post that tomorrow on the website. Thank you everyone for that. Now we're on to the, the question about personnel. You have to provide, we got you somewhat to do.
I would stay home, work them as needed. An emergency, you know, emergency situation when a painful comes up, or if, um, Joe needs to go out and take care of a dam or something, some emergency comes up besides that, um, I'd say, stay on leave. Hear my suggestion? Comments, guys?
We have one road guy, how many? Who's even going to be exposed to himself? Who's, uh, how many requests have you received? Any, anything official?
From employees? Nothing written? I've got three. So, um, that's a pretty large number. I mean, your firefighters, you don't have to, they have to work. The chief has that burden, but you don't have any of those people coming here because they, they have to. Yeah, we suspended terminating inspections, any of that secondary stuff, putting smoke detectors, any of that. All it is now is just CMS calls and fire calls.
And what about when citizens need questions answered? Are you going to just have people on the phone answer their phone because?
The technology we have now, Tracy, uh, all messages roll over the voicemail immediately. And it types stamps them. We can have guidelines put together that the employees must answer those questions and those emails to write the work down, if that's what the trustees want. Then they're required to, to answer those calls based on the ruling over to the voicemail. Uh, the capability is not there for people to answer the phone from their home through the township phone system. For all calls, that's not possible. You might be able to do one house, but not all. At this point, um, everyone's voicemails go to email and it stamps it. So there's no reason why somebody wouldn't be checking their computer every so often to make sure they didn't get a message. But the, the question, some of the argument today, I'm sorry, my apologies, go ahead.
Do it.
One of the arguments I witnessed today made a lot of sense. Your residents are hurting, are suffering, are worried about this whole thing. Why would you want code enforcement out there making clean the property up for just this short period of time? That was the first argument out of their code enforcement officer. Then the road department said that, you know, they had multiple trash materials sitting out there. And they're picking up trash that could be contaminated by what the governor says. So you have a chance that you expose your road, road workers picking up trash that could have the COVID virus in it. Dead animals, now there's a question because of the tiger and all this other stuff, now there's four animals in that zoo, that this COVID may be going back to animals. So if you're picking up dead animals, your exposure road people to the point of getting COVID. But again, that was the arguments today. I just needed to know what you wanted to do, and I'll make it happen.
They're not working from home, man. They're not getting paid.
Yeah, they're getting paid. You have to pay them.
Who's going to monitor whether they're doing any work?
Well, that's the question that the trustees have to decide.
Why would you have to get paid? Why would you just lay them off, they get unemployed?
Well, that's, trustees could decide to do that too, Russ.
I wish my decision, in my, my opinion, if you're two of the people there, it's most to, to say what you want to do.
How many people are we talking about? Three? I'm working through the whole thing, so, because, you know, in charge, so, four. What Harrison is doing in the road department is they're putting them on call. There's a call in like a snowstorm. They come in and they take care of the problem, then they go back home. But that's just an example. Butler is doing the same thing. Their road, their soup and their, uh, their, their vendors ran out at any place.
Of what city in the county is working?
Code enforcement, if you're not having a worked up for code enforcement and zoning, why are they getting paid? They just don't work. They work part-time anyway.
Well, the government, through this, uh, what came about, they're trying to keep people, employers, to pay their employees to keep things going. And they're giving monies to have those things done. Now, why don't we just put them on, uh, call and let them stay at home if they are calling? Or they can check their phones a few times during the day and let it go for this first week.
I think, uh, if, not everybody's set up to work remote, but they can keep up with their messages and.
Well, their emails are constant. They can get it at home on their own computer or their cell phone, so.
So stipulate they can work remotely, but they're going to have to keep up with, uh, communication, email, and phone. At least to let them know we're still working and schedule them after the, we get through this crisis.
Hey Mike, Mike, you made a proposal. How long do we do this? Because you guys can't get back together and tell me, and so how, I just need to know how long.
Till next meeting.
Till next meeting?
No. Yep.
Unless you recall numbers, or if we can, yeah, whatever. Well, if that's.
Did I give it that?
Is that what you guys want to do? Take a vote on it?
I want you to reread the motion real quick, want to tighten it up. What are you going to do about this, the salary situation? They're hourly pay, they're weekly pay. You guys didn't discuss that?
Well, Mr. Mann stated the fact that they continue to get paid.
I'd say we pay them for a 40-hour work week.
Give us their full time.
If they're full. If they're part-time, we pay them. But they've been averaging part-time.
You have a motion, you might make a motion on that, and then we get.
Want you to restate it to get it on the record.
I make a motion that we, uh, have our employees that come in, those that are full-time are full-time. The ones that are part-time, then we'll pay them their part-time wages for next week. Uh, those are.
And they will work remotely to the best of their ability and keep up with telephone and email through the first, first meeting in May.
Second. Good. We've got second before we get questions. Okay, so we got second, we got motion in the second. Sometimes I write up and give you the number, we don't have a number today. Any questions?
Yes, there's a payroll coming, so somebody will have to come in and do payroll.
Would that be, yes, and that's where, Steve, we need to come in and, I mean, there's enough separation in the office.
Yeah, we're going to call them, Tracy, when we need them.
Yeah, and you can handle that with the separation, keep your eyes safe and that kind of thing. A dead animal, a dead animal who lay, Steve. You don't need to go lay there. Not for now. Kick it out of traffic, and that's it.
Got it. And I can do that.
Okay, so, any other questions, come back?
So what are you guys going to do about my own grass for the next month?
I guess we'll, let's, well, we, we don't really move. Again, Joe can do the bare minimum, Steve. If need be, just be, just the administration building, the fire stations, let the parks go, don't load anything the more than we need to. You guys give it that?
We'll take care of the fireworks here.
We have a motion on the floor, can we get a roll call?
trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
trustee McGuire?
Yes.
trustee Mann?
Yes.
So is this going to be a-
Motion passes.
This going to be a resolution written up, or we just?
You got it, Steve?
I can get one written up, yes.
Okay.
What number do you want to sign, Tracy?
O twenty, twenty dash, O twenty-eight.
Okay, physical officers' report is next, Tracy. You got the floor?
Um, I mailed everyone the A reports that you've got. Um, in the packet is, uh, on the back table, and in your packet is fund summary and appropriation and comparison of budgeted, 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 and the last column, the variance. If you look down the column, you'll see that, um, and those have been in for the last two to three years. Cemetery and the general fund are having issues. Um, we just, we budgeted basically the same amount. You get in basically seven hours, you budget it. So the revenue and appropriation are about the same. Three hundred, if you look, it's like $311. So if anything major comes up, we'll be in trouble. So we have to consider when we go throughout this year, what we're going to do on the general fund. But if you look at the other ones, they look like they have plenty of, plenty of, um, variance, leeway. But if the general and the cemetery, we're going to have to look at, keep an eye on that variance. Well, you don't have to keep an eye on the variance, you just have to keep an eye on the appropriations, um, which is the other, the 13-page report. And see how you're going throughout the year. You look at that report, you look at the last column, it has percentages. Say for instance, we looked at, um, just look at the trustee line. We're a quarter of the way in the year, right? And we've already used 27%. You would think you only use 25%. So that gives you an indication, same thing with the physical officer. It gives you indication that we may run short, possibly run short come the end of the year. So that column tells you a lot, even though you might not think we'll go down to, depending on how you, the time's out, you might not, you, you know, we might get out of that myself. Just go down there and look, most of them should be around 25% at this point in the year. And it just depends on which, which line you're looking at. So that's, that's how you use, kind of use this part of that report. Of course, a lot of it could be because if you look at the column next to it, it says unencumbered balance, that means, so there's some POs that have been written, or BCs, or purchase orders that have been written. And that's why those numbers are so low, too. So you just have to be careful when you're looking at this report, what you're looking at. And that's why I ask every time to ask me questions, and I can give you an indication of why these numbers are, are like they are. For instance, I'm going to do that. Um, the general fund is not really going to use. I'm going to look at the road department, I'm going to look at the fire department. But, um, because I just write the purchase order for the general fund, I just use the O five on the line. And then if we have to come back and close out, we'll close out. But, you know, use this report, I mean, this is a good report to use, and that's why I gave it to you in the packet. There are other good reports, too, that you get in, uh, and send you in your email, the revenue report. It depends on what you're looking, and there's a lot of other reports that are available in UAN, and it would, would be nice for you guys to have, um, access to UAN and get those reports. You get, I don't know, valuable, and I don't know when that's going to happen, especially with everything that's going on, it's going to be delayed more. So other than that, and the, and the, also, um, I want to tell you that I'm going to have sometime this weekend, I'm hoping by Friday, I'm going to have at least 25 more invoices for you guys to sign. Because I do want to just go on Monday. Probably at most, 25. Um, because I just got four more bills in the mail today. So I'm trying to have them in, in the box by Friday. But some of them are, some of the ones I got Monday, I do like right away. They're not past due. So other than that, is there any questions for me? My report's done.
I'd like a motion to accept the physical officer, physical officer's report, pay the bills, invoices, appropriations, and warrants.
Second.
Motion on the floor to accept the physical, physical officer's report. Any questions? Can we vote, please? Tracy?
trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
trustee McGuire?
Yes.
trustee Mann?
Okay. Next, we have some resolutions to talk about. The first one, 2O-026. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorized the Township Fire Chief to separate probationary Level Two firefighter EMT William Huff from the Jefferson Township Fire Department.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2O-dash-026.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2O-dash-026. Any questions? Have a roll call, please, Tracy?
trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
trustee Mann?
Yes.
trustee McGuire?
Yes. Okay, so next resolution, resolution number 2O-dash-027. Approving 2020 transfer of funds totaling $4,000. Chief Wallace, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, there's, I'm moving some funds round into EMS supplies in case we have to. Buying stuff right now is a challenge, and prices gone up, so I'm just going to beef that up just a little bit, just to make sure that we have no issues.
I'd like to make a, uh, motion, we adopt Resolution 2O-dash-027.
I second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2O-dash-027. Any questions? Ms. Edwards, can we have a roll call, roll, please?
trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
trustee McGuire?
Yes.
trustee Mann?
Yes.
Steve, do you know how tired you're going to put on a revolution of 28 yet?
We, 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 we do it together. We want to do it Thursday. Because that's okay with you.
Okay. I still have the mic, are we going to discuss this one at, um?
I don't have it on the packet, no. The packet was handed to you several.
It's handed to you several.
Did you?
Over there, it's over there.
Oh, okay. So this will be, uh, 029 in, Tracy?
This one they discussed in the work session?
Yes, yes. This was discussed in the work session, guys. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution, uh, number 2O-dash-029. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees adopt the Jefferson Township Maintenance and Repair Program, including guidelines, checklists, and procedures.
Who wrote the resolution?
I did. Well, she did, and then I approved, and then I reviewed it.
It's all been picked over by legal? Much as we can.
Chief and I, just give you a little extra, Chief and I have always talked too, remember, every year you set your policy. So you can always adjust this policy, but this is our first policy.
And we've had seven revisions.
We've had seven revisions, I can report.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2O-dash-029. Any questions? Okay, Tracy, can we have a vote, please?
trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
trustee McGuire?
Yes.
trustee Mann?
Yes.
A motion, uh, resolution passes? Do you give initial vote?
No, you can, but you don't have to.
Yes, correct. Yes, correct. Okay, uh, anybody have a problem with skipping, skipping the departmental reports to save time?
Make a motion to do that.
Huh?
You need to make a motion.
I, I was asking first, you think, you wanna do it, then I'll ask a motion. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we skip the departmental reports.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to, uh, bypass the departmental reports. Any questions? Vote please, Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have comments by citizens. Looks like first left, Linda.
Russ.
Russ left.
Russ left.
Yeah.
Linda Rowley, two four six South Biden Mill. Um, I have fifteen unanswered questions by the trustees. And last month, Mr. Mann told me that this time he would have answers for me.
When it's our word, activate the timer, your rules.
I do have one question before the bond starts, though.
Yes.
The three minutes, is that on my talking time or is that on being ignored by the trustees?
You have the floor for three minutes.
Okay, and I have a point of order as well. It seems that every time anything is done, there's three trustees sitting up there, and you always answer. You're not the president. We have a president of the trustees. I would like for you to refrain and let him do this job, be whichever trustee chooses to be president at the moment.
Well, you're addressing the board as a whole.
No, I'm addressing Mr. Mann right now, and I specifically said, Mr. Mann.
I don't have all the, the whole lot, but it's at the point of, um, fine.
Okay, do I have receipts and what I asked?